Thank you so much, Council President Dundon. First, I want to say that I am honored to give this proclamation today. JR is, was a constituent in my district. Not only was he a constituent, we both have children that are in the same grade, the same class. Last year, when we, sorry, just getting a little emotional, last year, we were both classroom parents. And it's so rare that you see a dad being a classroom parent, and I always loved that about him. Whenever we, it was time for us to give stuff, Megan's here too, Megan, hi Megan, Megan's a classroom mom too. But whenever it was time for us to, you know, do anything in the class, he was always very helpful and always had a bright smile, even during our pickup, I would always see him, he'd ask, "How you doing?" And he will definitely be missed. Even though we are giving this proclamation today, I still don't think that is enough in, you know, for what he has sacrificed for the city of Binghamton. Just on behalf of City Council, we are very grateful for you. Thank you to his beautiful family, his wife, his beautiful kids. Just know that we, as a city, will always stand behind you. Anything that you need, we are here for you. So, thank you so much, and thank you, JR. I'm going to read this proclamation, and it starts as, "Whereas, the city of Binghamton deeply mourns the loss of JR Gadett, a dedicated and courageous firefighter who selflessly served our community. And whereas firefighter Gadett devoted his life to protecting the lives and property of the residents of Binghamton, demonstrating exceptional bravery, professionalism, and commitment. And whereas, through his years of service, firefighter Gadett embodied the highest ideals of public service, putting others before himself and making the ultimate sacrifice in the line of duty. And whereas firefighter Gadett will be remembered not only for his heroic acts, but also for his kindness, leadership, dedication, family, colleagues, the community. And whereas, the city of Binghamton extends its deepest sympathy to the family, friends, fellow firefighters, and firefighter Gadett during this time of grief. Now therefore, may it be resolved that the city of Binghamton does hereby recognize and honor the life, service, and sacrifice of JR Gadett. To be further resolved, that this proclamation to be presented to his family as a token of appreciation for their solemn remembrance and extraordinary contributions to our community. Signed, Michael Dundon, Council President, Carla Murray, City Council District One, Robert Cavanaugh, City District Three, Nate Hotchkiss, City Council District Four, Hadassah, District Five, Robert, I mean Rebecca Rathmaugh, District Six, and myself, Kenya Middleton, District Two." Thank you guys so much, and I'm so sorry. Please, please let us know if you need anything, we are here for you. Thank you.
In honor of firefighters that die in the line of duty, the IFF, representing 350,000 active members across North America, would like to present the Martin E. Pierce Commemorative Line of Duty Death Medal to the family of John Gardett, our fallen brother. Briefly, on behalf of the family and the fire department, we would like to thank the City Council, the mayor, and the community at large for all of your support over the last month. It has been greatly appreciated.
Again, thank you to all of our firefighters for what you do. This community could never give enough praise or respect. So, we are going to do our reports from committees. Councilmember Middleton, do you have anything from the MPA committee?
Yes, we have an MPA committee meeting on Monday regarding the marijuana legislation. So, it's just a town hall meeting, that's the only thing that we have.
Councilmember Hotchkiss, do you have anything to report from borough?
At our meeting, we just reviewed the annual audit and everything looked fine with that.
Councilmember Middleton.
Oh, for CDAC, I guess they were having some issues with Quorum. I don't know if people, the people who represent, um, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you. I guess they were having some issues with Quorum at the last, uh, meeting that I was at on last Wednesday. So, let's just remind your people, I think there's some, I don't know if all the appointments were being made.
Third district is still, I'm still missing my appointment. I'm trying to recruit tomorrow night.
That's fine, yes. Yeah, so yeah, that's, I think that's kind of, huh?
I just said, "My bad."
Oh.
For no longer being the third district.
That's a positive thing. So, that's kind of the issue there, there with Quorum, they just need enough people in order to hold the meetings. So, Steve asked me to bring that up to everyone.
Councilmember Rep., do you have anything on the CC?
Nothing for the Commission for Conservation of the Environment, but the planning committee does have a meeting scheduled for 2:00 PM this Friday to review zoning amendments related to public health.
Would love him, I'd love him.
And Councilmember Madavetsky, any report on the?
Much of our last traffic board meeting was held over for the next meeting. I do have extensive notes on everything that was voted on, but I can talk to people about it afterwards because it's not one topic, like a dozen.
I don't believe we have any appointments for tonight, so we'll move on to public comment. Residents wishing to submit public comment may do so electronically by emailing their comments prior to 1:00 PM to clerk@cityofbinghampton.gov or come in person during the meeting. If you'd like to come and speak for public comment. Good evening, and please state your name and if you live or work in the city of Binghamton.
My name is Elaine, I live on the south side of Binghamton. I was able to get affordable housing, thanks to support of housing through Catholic charities. So, I'm happy I got a nice four-bedroom apartment. It's permanent housing, and I was able to, and Catholic charities pay 70% of my rent. I only had to pay 250 a month plus my utilities. Now, I'm going to ask in question form, how would City Council feel if they had a family member who didn't make much money and had children that needed public schools? How would they react? I mean, each one of the nine need to think about that, because once again, breaking the law is breaking the law. It was passed through Congress in 1980 by Jimmy Carter for Board of Education to stay alive. That means it passed through Congress before he could even sign into law. And Jimmy Carter was a true meaning of evangelico, he proved it by signing that into law, so no child gets denied education or pre-K or pre-Head Start, they need their education. And another thing, how would City Council feel if they had a loved one battling cancer or some chronic disease? How would each one of you feel if there was a family member of yours suffering? Would you want them to live longer so you could spend more quality time with them? I mean, I give families that, because I went through it when my own sister battled leukemia. She had no more choice but to go under operations. She had a double mastectomy done on her, she even had all of her reproductive organs removed down below because the blood cancer hit her that hard, she was born with leukemia. There was no getting around that. She died in her late 40s because she was given the care that she needed those years, that she needed to live longer. And that's why I give back to the community the luck that I had of keeping my sister alive that long. And my stepson, Randy's half-brother, died from AIDS in his 30s. I didn't even know he had HIV until it was too late to even save him. And he died in his 30s from AIDS. That's why I take it very seriously on the medical care. You never know when a pandemic can hit you or a fatal disease can hit you, and you lose your family. And I would not want anybody suffer like that, you know, regardless of party or beliefs. And for me, these executive orders, each one of the judges say, "It's completely illegal, these executive orders," because they have to pass through Congress alone. Most of the president can do is veto, he cannot do executive orders that's overriding Congress, and that is illegal. Judges know what they're talking about on state level and federal level. So, yes, you guys do have a good case to sue, which you can do right here in Binghamton through Supreme Court, you know, all nine of you could do that. To protect the children, to protect people from losing their healthcare, he wants to do executive order on everybody's healthcare coverage. You can't do that, people need that healthcare coverage for a reason. And maybe they have to pay a fee for it. I had to pay a fee for mine, 110 a month, I had to pay my Medicare. I didn't mind as long as I had coverage. And that's all I've said on the matter. I'm happy you guys made it in here, including you in the corner, because this is where you get to have a chance to think by putting a question for him. It will help you get transparency that you need, and hopefully pass things now on City Council level, so you can kick it up to county. We cannot just let him take away Board of Education, because now he wants to take the loans that the students owe from the colleges or wherever they borrowed it from and put it in some agency's hands. I don't want the students being overcharged for their loans that they got just to go to college. That's going to cause us to lose our colleges and our universities, not just public schools. Him doing that, abandoning Board of Education, that started with a break, and those were bad policies of his, and Republicans on federal level have been running with that ever since.
I have about a minute left.
I know it's not the fault of the City Council. All right. I'll let somebody else speak. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Does anybody else like to come down and speak during public comment?
Please state your name and if you live and work in the city of Binghamton.
Yes, my name is Allison Donnelly, and I work in the city of Binghamton, and I represent the Greater Binghamton Association of Realtors. And I'm just wanting to, you know, make our stance known that we do oppose the good cause eviction legislation as it is written and will be put forth, I believe, in the mayor's veto. So, we wanted to make our stance known on that, that we do not support the good cause eviction legislation. We believe that it will have harmful impacts to the individuals that it actually seeks to protect. I think that if you're in the conversations and in the rooms with the people that are discussing their rights and the private property rights that are, you know, being, I know that there's a disdain for the concept of private property rights, and I recognize that, but it is the foundation of the United States of America, is the freedom to own property, and it is something that sets us apart from other countries, in fact. And I think that if we erode that and we continue to erode that, we are eroding some of the rights of our citizens. With that said, we hope that you will take a look at the legislation and consider the unintended consequences to the individuals you hope to protect. This is not the mechanism by which you will protect those individuals, you will harm them. And I hope that, I hope that we won't fall victim to vitriol and name-calling and laughing at landlords when they express their opinions and needs, because I've seen a lot of disdain for your constituency that actually is a property owner, you know, individuals that are property owners that do come forward to speak because somehow they're being categorized as a group that does not deserve your representation. And I think that that's a slippery slope, to look at your constituency that way. And we recently sent some individuals to some landlord training, and there was some borderline bullying and laughing at their concerns, and I think that's no way to bring our community together, is to divide groups and having them pitted against each other. I think we need to work better together and not paint with a broad brush. Any one group of individuals or people, specifically landlords in this case, are being painted as the enemy. And I think that this legislation will, in fact, harm the people you're trying to protect while you're single-mindedly looking past the value of a landlord and what they do provide to our, our city. They provide a tax base, they are valuable individuals within your city, and they do deserve your representation as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak? Seeing nobody else wants to come down and speak for public comment, was there any emailed in that needs to be read into the record?
Yes, there are. One of them was submitted anonymously, would you like me to read it into the record?
Sure.
Alrighty. Dear councilmembers, I am a local mom and pop landlord, I am a good landlord, I take care of my property, I take good care of my properties and my tenants, I'm actively involved in this community, I hire local people and I support local small businesses. I think we can all agree that Binghamton needs more people like me, not less. Unfortunately, I'm writing to you today to inform you that I'm moving out of Binghamton and selling my properties here, as I feel that City Council has made it clear that they do not want good mom and pop landlords in Binghamton. I believe that good cause eviction has a lot of good intentions, but I feel that the law was written for New York City and not for small upstate cities like Binghamton. I'd like to remind City Council of my thoughts on the overlooked impacts of this legislation. These are based on reality, coming from a real-life mom and pop landlord who has changed their actual operations since the introduction of this law. Number one, voting yes to this law is a vote for guaranteed maximum annual rent increases because this law establishes a use-it-or-lose-it system. Number two, voting yes to this law is a vote to specifically punish all the good landlords who have kept their rents well below market. Greedy landlords already charge maximum rent, so a 5% to 10% maximum increase per year is plenty, but for all the nice mom and pop landlords who keep rents way below market, they will be forever punished for their generosity. Number three, voting yes to this law is a vote to increase homelessness, because tenants are now forever tenants, I must be more selective who I rent to and will never again take a chance on someone who may not deserve it, leaving more units vacant, something that mom and pop landlords likely can't afford, so they may sell to out-of-town, larger landlords. Number four, voting yes to this law is a vote to increase crime in Binghamton. Drug dealers, criminals, offenders, and more will realize that if they move to Binghamton, they likely can live forever without risk of eviction, as good cause revokes a landlord's ability to not renew a lease, which was previously the only viable path of eviction for a paying nuisance tenant. Number five, voting yes to this law is a vote to decrease the value of every property in the city and discourage investment into this community. Mom and pop landlords who have low rents that are now forced by this law to keep rents low forever will see the largest drop in property values. Good cause that is proposed is not the answer. Trust me, I'm literally a landlord who literally runs to actual tenants, and I am currently making real-life decisions based on the expected passing of this legislation. City Council members, have you ever been a landlord, and do you fully understand all the ramifications of this law? If the answer to either of those is no, then you need to listen to us landlords. As a direct result of my concerns about good cause eviction, I've been forced to increase rents on tenants who can't afford it. I've declined 50% more tenant applications than before the law was introduced, and I've sent out more eviction paperwork in the past few months than ever before in my life. I don't want to do these things, but when legislation is proposed that punishes mom and pop landlords, I have no choice. I'd like to end by reminding councilmembers that all multi-unit properties in the city might default must have a landlord, somebody is going to own the property and be the landlord. So, why do you choose to push forward legislation that specifically punishes all of the good mom and pop landlords? What will happen when all of the good mom and pop landlords leave? Seems like we're going to find out. Thank you for your consideration, concerned mom and pop landlord. From John Darrow, I wish to voice my support of the mayor's veto regarding the good cause legislation before City Council. Seems appropriate for subsidizing government housing, however, it's another restrictive measure on the property owners trying to earn their livelihood. Economic discrimination is being imposed by this council on the landlords. I recently read an article which stated that Binghamton is the most economically depressed city in New York State. Implementation of this policy will ensure we maintain our current position as further restrictions such as the Good Cause Plan will further cripple the economic developments of the property owners.
Okay, that is going to be it for public comment. We will move on to the review of the mayoral veto. Wow. That is LL 25-01, Considered in Planning, and I'll hand this over to Councilmember Rathmaugh.
Thank you, President Dundon, this is Local Law 25-01, a local law amending the city of Binghamton Code, Section 265, to add Chapter 4 for good cause eviction.
Well, I'm going to read the office of the, from the mayor, his veto letter and read it so it is in the record. Dear President Dundon, I have vetoed Local Law 25-01, a local law amending the city of Binghamton Code, Section 265, to add Chapter 4 for good cause eviction. My track record on housing is crystal clear. This is not a municipal official in Broom County, there is not a municipal official in Broom County who has delivered more in terms of support, advocacy, and new investments in housing. Binghamton was the first city in the state to be named a governor's pro-housing community. In the last few years, we've allocated more than 11 million toward affordable housing projects, representing hundreds of new units for families and tens of millions in leveraged investment. Just a few weeks ago, we secured a 10 million grant to revitalize Clinton Street anchored by three major affordable housing developments. We have taken aggressive actions against slum lords, arresting bad actors, and appointing a first-of-its-kind attorney position to prosecute these criminals that put vulnerable families at risk. Binghamton has cut red tape, up-started creative programs, allocated scarce resources, and expended tremendous political capital making housing a top issue. We have acted well beyond statements of values and pro-housing designations and worked toward actionable change to build more units. Members of City Council have made housing a top priority too. While at times we have differences of opinion on certain projects or programs, City Council members have been engaged and active in Binghamton's housing challenges and understand what's at stake. Across New York State, Binghamton is looked to as a leader in housing, and I'm proud of that. I will support any effort that enhances neighborhood quality of life and supports families in our housing market, including intervention and regulation. No one is forced to buy rental properties or become a landlord. It's an investment that has risk and is subject to government regulation. Not unlike investing in a publicly traded company, investors may face similar margins or be forced to shift strategies to comply with new laws. It's what I did through zoning reform, taking a strong stand against the proliferation of student housing on the west side, and what I hope to do, working side by side with City Council and the community, in modernizing and resourcing code enforcement to achieve better results. Good cause eviction in its proposed form will hurt the city of Binghamton. Its adoption would have a negative effect on our housing market and the families we all in good faith want to help. Binghamton is not New York City. Binghamton needs its own solutions that address our unique circumstances, not a New York City-style law designated to punish New York City landlords. The city should, at minimum, study the impacts of these regulations and other upstate municipalities who rush to adopt them, especially as this version deviates from state-enabling legislation and does not exempt landlords who own 10 units or less. As Councilman Hotchkiss wrote, "Because this law is relatively new, there has not been time to adequately measure trends in other New York State municipalities." Housing providers, nonprofit leaders, attorneys, and real estate experts raised important points as part of the public engagement process, including landlords leaving more units vacant than rent to low-income tenants, decreasing available units, landlords shifting units to student-style housing which are less likely to lead to eviction proceedings, shrinking the number of available units for their families, landlords raising rents to the maximum allowed by default if barred from responding to market conditions or change of tenancy. Increased legal costs and lost revenue for more complicated eviction proceedings and capped rent increases will drive rental stock away from local mom and pop landlords to large corporate portfolios, more out-of-town property owners and Wall Street equity. Housing providers will choose other local municipalities not subject to good cause to make investments. In addition to these points, missing from the community engagement process was testimony from New York State Unified Court System officials who will ultimately be tasked with carrying out enforcement in Binghamton City Court. Perhaps more, most importantly, even if I supported this version of good cause eviction, there are outstanding legal questions over compliance timelines. Do existing proceedings need to be reenited because the law goes into effect immediately? When good cause was enacted in New York City, eviction notice requirements were delayed four months to avoid any impact on existing proceedings. This issue alone may lead, may well lead to costly taxpayer-funded litigation and starting the process from the beginning. Finally, Greater Opportunities of Broom and Shenango, a nonprofit affordable housing and homeless services provider, with an impeachable, unimpeachable 60-year track record, working on the front lines of these issues, has detailed the many reasons this proposed law would hurt low-income renters. I've included a full copy of Greater Opportunities' letter to council as part of this veto message. Sincerely, Jared Cram, the mayor. So, making sure I put that into the record, can I have a motion to overturn the mayoral veto?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second. Oh, sorry.
Any discussion?
I have a few thoughts.
Go ahead, because I got a few facts.
Thank you. Thank you, Council President. So, I feel like my, my position on this has been pretty clear and unwavering, that it's necessary for us to increase the housing stability in Binghamton, especially as we've been facing unprecedented rent increases. And through this process of community engagement, it's only reaffirmed that. Further, there's actually been a number of different cases, not exclusively, but it seems like the majority of which have been senior citizens on fixed incomes that are facing anywhere between 30 and 100% rental increases, that they have absolutely no way of paying, and there's nowhere for them to move. And I think that type of business practice is not in line with the morality of our, our constituency, is not in line with the morality of what Binghamton residents really look for in their city. And by adopting this law, we have the opportunity to align our, our morality with our, our legal system to prevent this type of behavior or business practice from happening in Binghamton. I think it's, it's really haunting to me when somebody asks if there's anything that they can do to combat a situation where their rent is increasing to a point where they can't, they can't afford it, and there's, there's nothing on the books except for maybe a 90-day delay that prevents that from happening. So, I think this, this is absolutely necessary to adopt, and I hope you all continue to support it.
So, in the mayor's letter, one part stood out to me, and it said, "Across New York State, Binghamton is looked to as a leader in housing." Well, in our most recent audit by Bonadillo, from 2020 through 2023, this city of Binghamton added 250 units, representing a growth rate of 1.02%. two hundred and fifty units representing a growth rate of one point zero two percent in housing. In twenty twenty three alone, twenty eight additional units were added. If that's the forefront and the leader of the state in housing, how low is that bar? And one of the public comments that were made, I can only address from my own perspective. I have never singled out any constituents, realtor, landlord, developer. I will meet with everybody. I've talked to everybody fairly. Allison, we've had good conversations. So just for me and me alone, that is not the way I will ever be. I will disagree with somebody directly to their face. Anybody who knows me knows that. But just seeing these, these numbers out of our own audit shows how far we are behind the eight ball. I mean, the city pays Bonadillo to do this audit. I don't know how many other people actually read through this besides me, but it is something I read all the way through to know these statistics. So to me, we are way behind the eight ball. I don't believe in passing this today. This is the end of the conversation. As what I've been told for years is no other municipality is Binghamton. So I don't want to look at seeing what this does in any other municipality. I want to see what it does here for six months, nine months, a year, and then work with landlords and tenants to see if any amendments need to be made. Whether it's more teeth or whether it's a different approach. But that does not sway the fact that I will vote to overrule the mayor's veto tonight. Anybody else want to add to the discussion?
Sure. So I guess obviously we've had extensive discussions about this and my points from the previous vote was that in some regards, good cause is a pause. It's just a pause that keeps people in their homes while we figure out what we need to do. So again, I agree with Councilman President Dundon that, you know, we do need to reassess and see if it's the right strategy. I did identify a professor at Binghamton University who is willing to assist with looking at numbers and things like that. We need to figure out a strategy for getting numbers. I think there's a different professor that might have some students that could help with surveys and such. So even though we haven't been actively during council meetings discussing this since the last vote, more work is going on to keep things moving with rollout and understanding. Additionally, obviously we'll get reports from Rochester and other places to understand the bigger picture. And I look forward to having another big discussion on this in the next year or so.
Anybody else want to add to the discussion?
Yeah, I think so. First, just to address some of the comments that were made earlier. Just under twenty nine hundred evictions have been filed in Binghamton City Court since COVID's emergency eviction moratorium expired in twenty twenty two. Less than a quarter were hauled over proceedings, the only filing type impacted by good cause eviction law. That is not the blow to the rights, quote unquote, of property owners. Some are claiming it to be. It is, however, a way to ensure that the on average one hundred and thirty or so households who are removed from their homes each year for arbitrary reasons will now have a chance to keep that roof over their heads. And in response, since it was read on record in response to Mayor Cram's veto of good cause eviction law earlier this month, I want to point out that his statement failed to cite any actual data to support his argument that the legislation will hurt Binghamton residents. Instead, to back up his claims about hypothetical harm, Cram was able to highlight the opposition of just a single nonprofit. Greater Opportunities for Broom and Shenango, an agency that is not only dependent on his administration for funding, but that is itself one of the top five evictors in Binghamton suing just under twenty tenants for eviction per year since January twenty twenty two. And I think I also want to just mention, there seems to be a tendency on the part of nonprofits and associations to consider that their five oh one C three status or their membership numbers somehow qualify them to speak on behalf of tenants. And not only does it not, but tenants don't need organizations to speak on their behalf. Tenants are the experts in their own experiences. And there were dozens who came out in support of the expanded protections that good cause will afford them and their families. So I am happy and proud to prioritize their perspective and absolutely plan to continue to do so.
There, there is one thing I forgot to add in my comments. So the national average over that time was six point five percent. Why are growth rates one point zero two percent housing?
Thank you for that. I would just like to say that I had the experience of sitting at a, at eviction court last week and just to, I was already okay with voting for this. But after that, this definitely gives me, you know, more power in knowing that I made the right decision. We here in Binghamton, a lot of the times people come down here and they're so scared for change. And the thing is, how will we know like anything if we're not changing and we have to be open to that? I just wanted to say to you, please reach out to me anytime. It doesn't matter who it is, just like Mike said, it doesn't matter who it is. You learn from different people. So I'm always willing to hear a lot of different sides. I was in a grocery store and I bumped into a landlord who, who at first was really worried about good cause. And then he said it, it had nothing to do with him because he was a good landlord. So I think a lot of the times, like you see the headlines and it, it's just like what's going on nationally. It's like the smoke and nothing is getting done and it's prohibiting progress. So I am definitely going to vote on this again. And I really hope that we can start having more conversations like this, but also doing because we can set up a plan and all these committees and all these different things, but nothing really gets done. And in that process, there are people that are suffering every single day. So thank you.
Anybody else?
I guess I'll throw back on, on the record from, from the previous longer discussion that during my research before voting initially, I did talk to landlords that are in support of good cause because it continues to be kind of represented as landlords are only in opposition. And that includes, I did talk to some local landlords that didn't want to be on the record because of the emotions, I guess, or however you want to put it around it. But I did speak to persons affiliated with the South Side that, that were not in opposition, similar to what Councilwoman Middleton was just representing. So except that they never had the negative perception, other than that they didn't really want to speak about it around other landlords. So there's that. And in my conversations in some of the other cities, there were actually kind of public speaking, pro-good cause landlords who believe that good cause will assist in their property values because people will be more likely to call their landlord relating to things that might be a code issue, whether it's out of past experience or an actual difficulty with their current landlord. Some tenants are concerned about calling about different issues because they're concerned about retaliation, whether or not it would happen with their particular landlord. That's a different issue. But even making the call, it's a barrier. And so the pro-good cause landlords in other cities have spoken about the property value issue. Their number one issue with property value is the landlords around them not maintaining their property, whether it's because they aren't getting calls from tenants or aren't proactively looking at it. And they believe good cause will help address that. So I just wanted to reiterate that since we're having a lot of conversation now about the landlord side.
Anyone?
So in the many, many conversations I've had during the development of this initiative, this and passing of this law, I've tried to temper everyone's expectations, I think. I don't think this piece of good cause legislation is going to be in any way a panacea for tenants and the renting population in Binghamton that are facing affordability and housing security issues and our, our, our supply issues. It's not going to be a panacea. It's going to help them, some people on the margins in certain cases. And I don't think it is the end of the rental market in Binghamton from the landlord's perspective either. These are some added restrictions to what landlords can, you know, arbitrarily do, but you know, it's more of a, a guardrail again at the margins of cases than, you know, hard regulation. There's soft caps built in. There are safety valves built in. And I, I think, I think I feel safe speaking for everyone. So when I say that we are committed to monitoring the impacts of this legislation, want to monitor the impacts, want to know what, what has, what is the outcome? How is the impact being felt throughout the community, through all of our constituent groups? So I, we will do the best we can in the next year and beyond to evaluate and consider the results of what we're doing. This is a one aspect, one component to prove the law of all addressing affordable housing and housing security.
So if no one else has anything to-
I just had one last thing. I'm sorry. And then I'm done. It said in there, increased legal costs. As we know, right now, this administration, I, I, I don't think that this current administration really cares about outside litigation, like we've, I've seen this administration use outside legal counsel for things that they shouldn't. And so I think that's just another excuse, like I said earlier, not to move forward and doing the right thing. Like I said, a lot of the times we put these barriers on things that might happen just as like a, a way to scare people or to scare anyone on making decisions. But from my point of view, and since I've been on council, I don't think this administration cares about the ramifications of outside litigation. So that's just my last little thing. Sorry.
So after a brief conference here with our corporate council, I'm going to need a motion to take five minutes for executive session because there's something that we have to discuss moving forward and it has to be done. It's getting legal advice. So can I get a motion for-
Motion.
In a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? All right, I call our regular meeting back to order. So after conferencing with corp counsel and in hearing some legal and talking amongst ourselves, just to make sure we err on the side of caution, we will not be voting on the mayoral veto tonight. We will be scheduling a special business meeting in the next few days. So we'll make sure we get it on the agenda in the necessary time and then the special business meeting will be coming up. So moving on to first read legislation, local law twenty five dash oh two considered in rules and procedures, and I'll hand it over to council member Madavetsky.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt local law twenty five dash oh two. A local law to amend chapter two hundred and ninety five of the code of the city of Binghamton requirements for submitting notice of defects.
I have a motion. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Have an emotion in a second discussion?
Basically, this is my understanding of it. It's a liability issue that we're trying to do the best for our taxpayers.
Anybody else have any other comments on this?
I would just represent, and this was covered in the work session when it was discussed. I understand the intention of protecting the city from liability, but in this case, it comes, in my opinion, at the expense of removing opportunities for residents to even identify unsafe conditions, let alone seek recourse if they fall victim to those conditions. And so when this was discussed in a work session, we asked what the long-term strategy is to ensure that not only access to electronic reporting, but accountability on the part of the city for prioritize the remediation of defects with potential to cause harm is. And I'm not sure we receive, I don't believe we received an answer to that.
To give notice of every crack and displaced root and whatever across, across any municipality in New York, you know, with a process which could be take advantage of particularly online reporting tools to, to really leave the city at, or any municipality at, at a really a danger of some overzealous litigation. I think that the current proposed law might close that door too much into a you know, tiny, tiny crack to get through with liability. So I, I think that for the moment, this measure gives protection to the city's municipality and allows us to restore our online reporting tools and our, our, our other methods of, of reporting and keeping the city up to date on citizen concerns. I would be interested in revisiting this and coming up with a way that is slightly more modern than having to physically hand deliver something to a very specific person, being the Commissioner of Public Works in this case. So what that reporting tool would be, or if it can at least be by mail, at least remove the need for a physical person, you know, a physical citizen to come down and physically hand something to somebody. I would be up for reviewing that, but for the time being to restore online reporting and stuff and protect the city overall, I think I'm, I'm in favor of this. But I think there is a medium to be sought in the longer term.
So how, how does this going to affect if, I think it's kind of like an annual thing where the mayor or elected official will say like, report potholes now because we're going to fix them in the next one. Yeah. So that's like, how does it affect that? Is it like you no longer ask for them, no longer receive them? No, like there's no-
It's the opposite.
Yeah. So yeah, so right now, it's like our, our app, the pothole is shut down. We had to pull it. Because simply reporting on that became notice of, for, for legal liability purposes.
But also Commissioner, Acting Commissioner Plutie's email address is no longer available. So no, no one can even submit.
Correct, because all of those methods-
Through his emails.
Suddenly became legal notice.
We've removed two options. If this is passed, the app is reactivated, but it still holds no weight or opportunity for recourse if an individual does indeed become victim to the defects they identify via the app.
Those, well, correct, that they're not legally sufficient to, they're not sufficient to legally constitute notice. Correct. And which, and they weren't Bob, you're welcome to jump in and help me here. They weren't generally considered sufficient legal notice either before this particular court decision. It is a wide interpretation that has led to this problem.
Correct. So prior to this court decision, everyone's understanding was reporting through the app wouldn't have constituted prior written notice. Similarly, things like phone calls aren't and still aren't considered notice of a defect. That doesn't mean that DPW doesn't get those reports and look at them and send people out to fix those potholes. It's just that for legal notice purpose- It's just that for legal notice purposes, they, those notices don't qualify as legal notice under the law.
Anybody else? Hearing none. Madam clerk, can we get a roll call?
Councilmember Rathwell?
Nay.
Councilor Madavetsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Hotchkiss?
Nay.
Councilor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Councilor Middleton?
Nay.
Councilor Murray?
Nay.
Council President Dundon?
Aye.
Thank you. That is two, five.
Moving on to introductory ordinance O twenty-five dash twenty-eight, considered in finance, and I'll hand it over to council member Kavanaugh.
Okay. I'd like to motion to pass O twenty, oh, oh, twenty-five dash twenty-eight, known to win the twenty twenty-five insurance fund budget for settlement payouts.
Have a motion. Can I have a second?
Motion?
Motion in a second. Do we have a discussion?
Sure. This is the pair package for firefighter debt in accordance with the fire department contract and New York state law. It accounts for his pay and pay for his dependent children and accumulated sick time and leave and such.
Anybody else have anything they'd like to discuss? Hearing none. Madam clerk, can we do a roll call?
Councilor Rathwell?
Aye.
Councilor Madavetsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Councilor Middleton?
Councilor Murray?
Aye.
Council President Dundon?
Aye.
Thank you. That's seven zero.
Moving on to introductory ordinance O twenty-five dash twenty-nine, considered in employees, and I will hand it over to council member Murray.
Thank you, President Dundon. I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance twenty-five, twenty-nine in our employees committee.
I'll second.
An emotion in a second. Any discussion?
So we discussed this on Monday. It's about making sure that the titles align with the current accurately reflects the current job description and also moving around the funds in order to account for salary increases.
Anybody else have anything they'd like to add? Hearing none. Madam clerk, can we do a roll call?
Councilmember Rathwell? Aye. Councilor Madavetsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Councilor Middleton? Councilor Murray?
Aye.
Council President Dundon?
Aye.
Thank you. That's seven zero.
Moving on to introductory ordinance O twenty-five dash thirty, considered in planning, and I'll hand it over to council member Rathwell.
I have a different order on my agenda. Oh, thirty?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. And so this is introductory ordinance O twenty-five, thirty, an ordinance to amend O twenty-four, ninety-three to provide legislative intent for deed restrictions related to the sale of city-owned property on Charlotte Street.
Do I have a motion?
I'm sorry. I'll make the motion.
Okay.
And I'll second.
Have an emotion and a second discussion.
So we went over this on, on Monday, but the when we had previously passed this, the deed restrictions that we had applied to those lots didn't match what I was trying to do, what we were trying to do, and I don't know how they got in there. We've since corrected that, and this will allow the city to have the first right of refusal. But then also allows for the owner to transfer to a third party after that.
Anyone else? Hearing none. Madam clerk, can we do a roll call?
Councilor Rathwell?
Aye.
Councilor Madavetsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Councilor Middleton? Councilor Murray?
Aye.
Council President Dundon?
Aye.
Thank you. That's seven zero.
Moving on to introductory resolution R twenty-five dash fifteen, considered in municipal and public affairs, and I'll hand it over to council member Middleton.
Thank you, President Dundon. I'd like to make, I'd like to make a motion for, for introductory resolution R twenty-five dash fifteen. A resolution authorizing twenty twenty-five rumble ponies fireworks.
Having a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Have an emotion in a second. Any discussion?
It's just basically unauthorized, an authorization for this year for the fireworks. I, I do think though, later down the line, we should have a discussion regarding the noise from the fireworks. I mean, people complain about it. I love it personally. I, it's, I, I like any type of noise, but some people complain about their animals and different things. So I think later down the line, we should definitely have a discussion regarding that. I don't, you know, I don't, I don't know what will happen from it, but just a discussion regarding noise. It's a very sensitive topic in Binghamton right now. So.
Anyone else?
If I remember correctly, there's actually less fireworks this year than last year.
Well, good.
States.
Good. Well, maybe that'll appease some people. It's hard to make everyone happy. I'm learning that.
Anyone else have anything else they'd like to add to this discussion? Hearing none. Madam clerk, can we get a roll call?
Councilmember Rathwell?
Aye.
Councilor Madavetsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Hotchkiss?
Nay.
Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Councilor Middleton?
Aye.
Councilor Murray?
Aye.
Council President Dundon?
Aye.
Thank you. That's six, one.
Moving on to introductory resolution R twenty-five dash sixteen, considered in planning, and I will hand this over to council member Rathwell.
Like to make a motion to adopt a resolution, introductory resolution twenty-five, sixteen to accept a fifty-five thousand dollar grant from Empire State Development for a strategic planning and feasibility parking study.
Have an emotion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Having a motion in a second. Any discussion?
And just a couple of work session notes. This is a grant that requires a match. So the total project cost is a hundred and ten thousand dollars. We did question the presenter during work session regarding what has changed so significantly downtown to require another parking study following the completion of the downtown Binghamton comprehensive parking study and strategic plan in twenty sixteen. The presenter represented that curbside management changed during COVID and due to COVID and also due to the demolition of the Coller Street parking garage. I do want to note as well, the amount, the match amount has already been approved in the transfer to capital funds twenty twenty-five budget.
Anyone else? Hearing none. Madam clerk, can we do a roll call?
Councilor Rathwell?
Nay.
Councilor Madavetsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Councilor Middleton? Councilor Murray?
Aye.
Council President Dundon?
Aye.
Thank you. That's six, one.
Moving on to introductory resolution R twenty-five dash seventeen, considered in planning, and I will hand it over to council member Rathwell.
Thank you. This is related. I'll make a motion to adopt introductory resolution twenty-five, seventeen to enter into an agreement with Nelson and Nygaard to conduct the downtown parking study.
Having a motion? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Have an emotion in a second. Discussion.
Um, I had, had a quick conversation with President Dundon before, before the meeting. We, I think as a body have been the last year, had a lot of situations where things were in process before any of us got here. Plans were created and executed and studies done. And we very much often found ourselves a mission of, hey, was city council room at this and that time? And I know I've reached out to previous city council people to, to try and, you know, figure out what was said by who and when. And I think, you know, a lot of us felt this way in particular recent, very recently with the Siemens contract. That there was, you know, questions of, you know, who from council was involved when, and I think we need to possibly take some affirmative steps going forward when we're commissioning things like this parking study where the city is, is going and trying to develop a plan and look at things to make sure the council is involved as a stakeholder in that process. And we discussed that a little bit during the work session. But I sort of putting this out there as a test case, if we are included and seek to be included and are included through this process, or if we need to specifically outline reports back to council and language in contracts to ensure the council is included during the process. During whatever stakeholders meetings happen, during whatever scope meetings happen. So I think that's something we we're here now at the start of one of these, and we need to monitor our involvement going forward and evaluate whether we have to take steps in our authorizing language down the road.
Is this some, something council member Kavanaugh, you'd like to put on hold over to dig into and work on amendments in the contract?
I mean, I'm
To use it as a starting point or just-
I'm willing to take this as a study point, but if somebody else would like to take that, try and take that further step now. I'm open to it, but I, I'm willing to let this one be a, a case study for us. Personally.
I think we were public that both Councilman Hotchkiss and myself are interested in being at those meetings. So we, there we go. Put ourselves out there publicly and on the record that we would like to engage and we'll see if we are invited.
I mean, putting ourselves out there publicly and on the record to want to be engaged doesn't seem to make a difference to this administration. So if that's something we want to do, then I think we need to look into the legislation and the contractual agreement. Hold this over and then make sure we're put in the contract as stated. So then that way we are not left out of the process.
I'm not really willing to do that for the, just a parking study, like there's, we've got bigger fish to fry, honestly, but a, there's another, it's related to the Deco district. I was able to invite myself into a meeting about that and
I'm sorry, did you say you were invited or invited yourself?
I invited myself after I-
So that proves my point of what I just said about the administration.
No, and, and I, I don't disagree with you, but I, I think I'm optimistic that we'll be included on that meeting, the first meeting for the parking study, and then we can follow it through. So because we know what's happening.
Okay, then there's no reason to hold over. Madam clerk, go do a vote.
Councilmember Rathwell?
Nay.
Councilor Madavetsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Councilor Middleton? Councilmember Murray?
Aye.
Council President Dundon?
Nay.
Thank you. That's five, two.
Moving on to introductory resolution R twenty-five dash eighteen, considered in planning, and I'll hand it over to council member Rathwell.
Like to make a motion to introduce, to adopt introductory resolution twenty-five, eighteen, a resolution to accept a one million dollar grant from Empire State Development.
An emotion? Do I have a second? Motion in a second. Any discussion?
I'll just represent this is for phase two of the Deco district street scape improvements.
Anybody else have anything they'd like to add?
Councilman Hotchkiss?
Since you did invite yourself to the meeting, I'd love to hear about it.
Oh, yeah, I was concerned about the planning because I'm left out of those plans and construction timelines and business notifications. And there was a meeting that is going to happen in the next few days regarding that. And so that's that's moving forward and it sucks being excluded from things that are happening in your district, that district that affect your constituents, but that's kind of the nature of the beast right now. That's all I have.
Anyone else have any discussion? That they'd like to add? If not, we'll go on to a roll call. Madam clerk, do a roll call.
Councilmember Rathwell?
Aye.
Councilor Madavetsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Councilor Middleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Murray? Council President Dundon?
Aye.
Thank you. That's seven zero.
We're moving on to communications from council. Tonight I will start with council member Murray.
Before we move on to that, I got, I just have a quick question. Did, I think Ron Lake had a piece of legislation that I thought was expedited? It's not on here about the adjusting the Barton and Legitis.
You're talking about the fourteen thousand now, fourteen-
Did that not get signed up or did we?
I don't remember expediting. I remember the discussion, but.
Okay. Never mind. I was planning on talking about that tonight, but it's here nor there. So we can move on. Sorry.
I'm verifying in my draft minutes. If you give me just a sec. It was not expedited.
Okay. So we'll go back to communications from council and council member Murray.
I don't have any at this time. Thank you.
Council member Middleton.
Um, nothing really. I'm just finishing up woman's month. Um, just again, thank you to all the women, my mother. Every single woman that puts their life on the line through all the sacrifices, we still get things done. So thank you for that. Just a reminder that tomorrow we have a West Side neighborhood meeting. I would like more people to come out to these meetings because I want to next month start a, excuse me, I want to next month, start our neighborhood cleanup in different sections of the West Side since it's so big. So I really hope that people come out tomorrow. It'll be at six o'clock at the Unitarian Church. Thank you.
Council member Kavanaugh?
Just I'll just echo my fellow council person from the West Side and come out to our meeting tomorrow. And if anyone wants to join CDAC from the West Side, please let me know.
Council member Hotchkiss?
I am disappointed that we could not pass good cause this evening. I have spent a lot of time working on this bill. Far beyond my time on council, and it has been a long and arduous process that I was hoping could be concluded and I could move into a more educational phase. I hate, I absolutely hate these delays. And I know it's, it's actually hurting people right now who don't have any other recourse for the situations that they're facing. So it really, really I think it's painful to read this veto letter again, and then hear the lip service that Mayor Cram pays towards trying to help vulnerable families, but he's unwilling to actually support them and giving them rights that would give them protections. So I think this is, he's, he's absolutely two-faced and this is just political garbage that he's playing. And that's my feelings for tonight. Thank you.
You know, Nate, you could always take the veto letter. Stick it in the trash. Moving on to council member Madavetsky.
Um, so I was hoping to have good news about the food bank having a monthly location in Southside East. Unfortunately, the new site also has some insurance issues we're hoping to work through. I'm staying on it. I'm in contact with the- some insurance issues we're hoping to work through. I'm staying on it. I'm in contact with the food bank. I'm in contact with the site. And we'll keep trying to push. I'm very grateful for Councilwoman Rathwell for her work on the grassroots angle, which I'm sure she'll talk about. But we continue to try and push forward to get a food bank site, and we will be, if the insurance issues continue to be problematic, we'll be looking at some alternatives. I had a little brainstorm with Teresa Kraus today. I got a call, email, and there's been some concern because Wise on Penn Ave has added additional security. Apparently, this is similar to what's at Wise on Robinson. There's a gate now, and so there's been some constituent concern. I did speak to persons at Wise. The thing I'm kind of allowed to say, I guess, like the official statement from Wise is that they're aware of no plans to close the store. So it, there is, I don't believe, based on my conversations that I'm unable to share, that there is any reason for alarm, but I do know that people have been concerned. So I did look into it, and I don't believe there's any reason for alarm. I wish that the public statement that I could attribute to a source at Wise was met with the private conversations I was able to have. Okay, Conklin Ave, I've been working on, looking at the twenty nineteen BMTS RSA study on Conklin Ave between Burr and Tompkins. I got the updated crash data for, for that, and I walked that section and created an updated report on what has and hasn't been done. I disseminated that to our traffic sergeant, our acting commissioner of public works, and our engineer, as well as looping in my fellow Southside councilman and the mayor's office. So I look forward to trying to figure out how we can make that area more safe. The crash data has not gotten better since twenty nineteen, but we also haven't really done any of the interventions that were proposed. So hoping to move that along. I talked to Acting Commissioner Pluti, Woodland, we're still don't have the reflective tape in. There was some defects with what was sent to us, and so it's been reordered. Discovery Center had a really beautiful cultural kaleidoscope day on Saturday. Wish I could have been there for more of it, but I did get some, some treats and got to see some beautiful clothing from all around the world, and it's a really great event. We also hosted the Toastmasters Division D contest this past Saturday in District Five in Southside East. And it was, it was really cool. We had a former competitor who made it all the way to the world semifinals competing, just trying to go for it again. So congratulations to Carrie, who won first place, and will be advancing to district, and to Paul, who won first place in Tabletops competition. So it was very exciting. I have Greenway Cleanup coming up, April twenty-fifth. Signups are available through the Binghamton Alumni site, or you can send me an email and I'll send you the link. You do not have to be an alum to sign up. Also, PAL Camp, signups start April first. You can get a week of pre-summer camp, and they have busing, including from Southside. So, thank you.
Councilmember Rathwell?
I'm finding myself too angry at the events of this evening that delayed the opportunity to override Mayor Cram's rejection of Good Cause eviction law to attach appropriate words in response, so I will echo every word and sentiment that Councilmember Hotchkiss stated in his comments and reiterate that Mayor Cram cannot continue to represent concern for the most vulnerable residents in this community while actively opposing their opportunity to obtain what is a very basic right and need for themselves and their families. Because Councilmember Medavetzky mentioned the disinvestment on Southside East reflected in the closure of the Wise Grocery Store now over a year ago, I want to share and I would say do in no part to a lack of effort on Councilmember Medavetzky and Councilmember Middleton's part on identifying an alternative solution. Given the lack of a solution, Southside East neighbors have come up with a neighbor-to-neighbor option that we are currently signing volunteers up for. It is a ride-share-and-shop opportunity intended to connect individuals on the South Side who are willing and able to give either a neighbor a ride or do their grocery shopping for them to connect those neighbors to those who need either a ride or shopping. So that link to sign up to volunteer is and will continue to be on my Facebook page. I'm also happy to email it out if folks are interested.
Well, obviously, the way it played out tonight with Good Cause, I'll just say what I think Councilmember Rathwell and Hotchkiss wanted to say was bullshit. And, but we will rectify the issue. We will do the special business meeting, and we'll make sure that we cover all our bases. Our East Side Neighborhood Watch is on April first at six P M. It's at the Hands of Hope Church on Robinson Street. I always enjoy the interaction I get with all my East Side constituents, and there's nothing that I find more fun than to stand up there and answer every question you guys have. So please come out and harass me with question and answer time that I have my most fun at during the week. So, thank you. With that being said, can I get?
I have one more thing. Always me with one more thing. I just wanted to say congratulations to the Binghamton Patriots basketball team. Yay! I, we didn't, we didn't say that, but thank you to them for winning their championship. I think a lot of the times, Binghamton City Schools get such a bad reputation. Like, don't send your children there. People always ask me all the time, why do I send my daughters to Binghamton? And Binghamton City Schools has some of the best programs that are far ahead. Not only that, it is one of the most diverse districts, and we know that the world is changing. So if you, if your child can get a glimpse of diversity from someone else, they are far ahead in life. And so I am thankful that I attended Binghamton Schools, that my daughters are attending and graduating from Binghamton Schools, and this is only the beginning for us at Binghamton. It's, it's positive, and it's going to continue to be positive, and I just want everyone, the teachers, the coaches, shout out to Mr. Paddock. He's my constituent and my neighbor. But I, I want us to all keep this momentum because we can do anything just in this, in this little city that we have here. We are a community represented with differences, and sometimes we all don't get along, but we all want the right thing, and it's all about love. So thank you so much, and congratulations to the boys, and I'll see you guys Saturday at the parade.
And thank you, Councilmember Middleton. I didn't even think about that with the way this evening has transpired, and also being Binghamton alumni, where all four of my kids graduated from Binghamton City Schools. Yes, the basketball team does deserve the accolades of winning that state championship, and hopefully, you know, we'll get to celebrate them and put them on the forefront Saturday. So with that being said, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
In a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion adjourned. Or meeting adjourned.